Call the Oatana City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, May 7th. And with that, may we have roll call.
Councilmembers Svenby.
Here.
Toulson.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
Mayor Coontz.
Here.
We have all seven of the council and the mayor present this evening.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the voice of the ladies.
(inaudible) America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
With that, I would like to welcome everyone here tonight and look for the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the agenda. And I don't see any changes at this point.
I believe we-
We look forward to a motion.
Last, I believe we did need to add one item to the agenda, the waiver for the Corky's early bird.
Oh, yes, yes. That would be added to that for, on the consent agenda items.
What was that last one here?
What's that?
What was the item I didn't hear?
Changing the Corky's date from last week to this week.
Okay.
We have a motion by Brent Svenby to approve, a second by Raymond Toulson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Next item on the agenda is our mayor, recognition for previous board and commission members.
It takes some heat, some volunteers to fill all the different boards that we have for the city of Oatana. And tonight, we recognize past board members that are going off, and we will also do post of office for who was coming out. But David Efferts, he served thirteen and three-quarter years on the Fire Code Board of Appeals, and we will mail his alpacto. Dave Ehrich.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very, very much.
The mayor and the city council express sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to David Efferts for eight years of service on the Civil Service Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your service.
Robert Hanson.
Tom.
Thank you. Thanks for your dedicated service.
No problem.
City of Oatana, the mayor and the city council express sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Robert J. Hanson for nine years of service on the Parkland Recreation Board.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jill Holmes.
Jill. Thank you very, very much for your service. Yep. City of Oatana, the mayor and the city council express sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Jill T. Holmes for twelve years of service on the Public Library Board. Thank you very, very much.
Steve Urkey.
Steve.
Yep.
Thank you very, very much for your service. The city of Oatana, the mayor and the city council express sincere appreciation, deep gratitude to David W. Urkey for five years of service on the Utility Commission. Thank you very, very much. Terry L. Jensen. Very, thank you very, very much for your service. The city of Oatana, the mayor and the city council express sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Terry L. Jensen for sixteen and a third years of service on the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is Paul Weller, I hope to see Dave tonight? Al Cole.
You know, just because you're retired doesn't mean that you gotta go off the board. What do I understand? The city of Oatana, the mayor and the city council express sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Alan D. Colander for three and a half years of service on the Human Rights Commission. Thank you very, very much for your service.
Kathleen Meyer, Kathleen's here. Kathleen had eleven and a half years on the Planning Commission. Dave Olson. Dave Olson. Dave had nine years on the Building Code of Appeals. Kevin Rainey.
Did you just say that? I just walked right there.
The mayor, sincere appreciation, deep gratitude to Rainey, eleven and a half years of service on the Parkland Recreation Board. That's the thing. Paul Slater, I don't see Paul. Paul served three years on the Civil Service Commission. Beth Sakar, I see Beth here.
Beth, thank you very, very much for your service. The city of Oatana, mayor and the city council express sincere appreciation, deep gratitude to Beth Sakar for one year of service on the Civil Service Commission. Thank you very, very much.
Very unusual, I don't see Roger Lawson. There you wait. As you walked in, everybody thought maybe you were looking for the Little Theatre, but that's not the case, so it's time to recognize you, so thank you.
The city of Oatana, the mayor and the city council express sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Jerome L. White for ten years of service on the Fire Code Board of Appeals. Thank you very, very much for your service.
And that is recognizing the ones that had the part of service.
With that.
Next, in front of you, you have a list of reappointments and new members, and so we'll look for the city council to approve those, and we will do the roll call for the new members after approval.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll move for approval.
We do have a motion to approve the reappointments by Raymond Toulson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion?
And new members.
And the new members, yes. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These have been approved, Tom.
Okay, thank you very, very much. If I can get the new members just to come forward and line up here. Get you lined up this direction, that way the camera can pick you up. I truly, truly appreciate you all saying yes, because it's a challenge to be able to find people that want to volunteer, and a lot of you went through the Leadership Oatana program and everything, understand what the value of the city brings, so thank each and every one of you for volunteering to do that. And raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye. And then I'll have you say your name.
Matt Cottie.
John Feyer.
City Officer.
Tim Leder.
Kial Lebo.
Do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear.
The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of Minnesota.
The laws of the city of Oatana.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge. The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of Public Utilities Commissioner.
Public Library Commissioner.
Planning Commission.
House and rehab.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Of the city of Oatana. The city of Oatana. To which I have been appointed. To which I have been appointed. To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God. To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God. Thank you very, very much for saying yes. We can sign them and just-
You want to just sign those, and I will take the original, I'll take both of them if you've got your information done as well. Thank you. Who can? Just if you've got, just verify your information, your email address, phone number.
You're not swearing in the reappointments. Not swearing in the reappointments again.
The council is that we have the Fire Code Board of Appeals and the Building Code of Appeals. And the new members are six members. I'm asking Chris and Mark to take a look at that to see if we can combine those and then bring them forward. In the eleven years that I've been mayor, they have not met yet, so it's kind of repetitious to have twelve people sit on the boards that don't need fair. The other thing is, I do have one opening that I haven't filled yet, and that is the Airport Commission, so if anybody is interested in serving on the Airport Commission, I have one open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to financial report, and I will give a quick recap of the financial report. Thirty-two thousand, three hundred and five dollars for Steel County Highway Department, West Beltline Pond. Thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars for Steel County Treasurer for 2013 real estate taxes. Thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars for Wentzel Construction for 2013 park driveway sanitary sewer relocate. One hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars for McQueen Equipment, the Pelican Street Sweeper. One hundred and ninety-eight thousand, ninety dollars for signal, federal signal, emergency warning sirens. Two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars for other expenditures for a total of seven hundred and one thousand, twenty-six dollars. To that, we add the May 1st Section 8 payments of sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars for a grand total of seven hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. What is the council's wishes?
Make a motion, pay the bills.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to pay the bills. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These items have been approved. The next item on the agenda is a consent agenda items, which are minutes, license permits, board commission reports, event permits, miscellaneous items, and grouped together in one motion for quick passage. What is the council's wishes?
Motion we approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Second by Raymond. Motion by Nate, second by Raymond. Any further discussion?
I've got, I've got questions in regards to the special use permits. Two in particular, the first one being the Just One More fundraiser. It says fundraiser, there's, it's not specific in regards to what the fundraiser is. We were just, we were just given the financials tonight, so question in regards to what the fundraiser is, have the bills been paid from last year's event? That's taken care of? Okay.
Say, if you'd like, you could pull this off the consent, and then we could deal with it, and, and I'm sure Al would-
We will pull this out of the consent agenda item and deal with it separately.
All right.
We, we also want to pull off the event for the Steel County Fair, because Public Works has not approved, Public Works is waiting for an estimate of their total amounts of things, and so Kyle had recommended that we, that's two months away yet, we know we're going to approve that, but he wants to give you a better estimate of what the Public Works cost will be for payments and cost and kind as well. So we are going to table that one also.
Okay, so we'll be pulling both those two items.
Well, the fair, the fair one, we will address at the next meeting, and the other one you can, and address here in, under action yet tonight.
Okay.
The fair one, we're not addressing tonight?
We'll do that at the next meeting.
2.52 is, will be addressed separately tonight, and 2.54, which is the Steel County Fair, will be addressed at our next meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
I've also got a question in regards to the, the other run. Is that?
That was at last meeting already.
It was.
I thought that was, I thought that was on here.
No, there's one for Northridge Church.
Yeah.
The Walk for Freedom.
There's a five key around there. That's on this agenda.
That, that's-
Okay, yeah, that's mine.
You got a question?
I had a question on the fair, but we're going to wait on the fair.
Yes, until next week. But we will take the, Just One More out and deal with that separately, so with that, all those other than that one, we've added Corky's state change?
Yep, everything the same, just for this weekend.
This weekend rather than last weekend, so with that, what is the council's wishes?
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? With that, we'll-
I should just know my involvement with the fairgrounds.
Okay, that will deal with-
We got the one item for the barn bash, so.
You got the barn bash, so you, you will abstain for voting on that one?
Okay.
So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved, there's one abstention. Now we'll deal with the Just One More, while it's still fresh in our minds here. Chris, you have something to add to that?
Pardon me? You have some additional information that was handed out this evening, and the previous year's bill has been paid. And I think we've gotten some additional information on where the funds will be donated to, and I'm sure Al can speak to any other questions that you would like, which may have-
Thank you. If you'd like to step up to the microphone, Al?
Aye. Helen Martin, Oatana, Minnesota.
Okay, you have some questions?
Yeah, Al, what, what is the fundraiser?
It's for the, we're donating the yellow ribbon suicide prevention charity chapter.
Okay, all right. I guess my question going forward on these, with, with council is, these, these tend to be very vague in regards to how much is given out for the, you know, is given back in, in regards to these fundraisers, percentage of what dollar, total dollars, along with percentage of, of what is raised. This isn't specific to, to the Just One More, this is a couple more that have come, come in. I would, I would suggest that we, we really look at, at how we're doing our special use permits in regards to that in the future. Couple other questions, if you don't mind, Al. Cleanup is 1 o'clock to 3 a.m. And, and then, along with that, kind of piggybacking, you've got signatures from business owners, but no residents. Are there residents that live?
There are a few, not very many.
Not very many?
No.
Okay.
I can, I don't know, I get old, but as far as I know, that is very proud, you see, the five, five, absolutely.
Okay.
People that's up there that handle.
Okay.
They're probably freezing, sitting in the window unless they're in the hall.
Yeah.
Kind of documentation.
Anyone else have any questions?
In the past, what's, what's been the amount you've been able to donate to the cause that you've-
Yeah, every year is different, but once, you know. My first one we had was, was the Fire Department Venture, which we're doing really well. After that, it's, we're lucky, lots of times, we make a few hundred dollars, so we donate what we can.
Do you have a percentage of what you make on it that you donate?
We never have a percentage, we just, I guess, is there a rule, or if all's saying what we have, or if we didn't have it for fundraiser, we wouldn't be able to have a street dance, or?
Well, you know, if, if it weren't a fundraiser, then it'd be a for-profit, which now we're, the city is providing services to bring the facilities and everything down.
So personally, even if we did, we're still, we should still be able to have a street dance.
But then you're gonna have to pay for that services.
Yeah.
Which it may be cheaper to rent the, the beer garden at the fairgrounds at that point than it would be to pay for the services to block the street off for, actually for one day.
Well, I understand that, but my intent is to have a street dance, there's lots of activities going on out in the beer garden, so I'm just trying to do something that I think is good for Oatana. Prior, before I owned the bar, you know, I've been on boards downtown where we have a street dance, it's a little national, family oriented, but not, not everybody has a family, so I might want to get out and have some fun also.
No, but what I'm saying is that if it's a, if you're there to make money on it, then, you know, we can't do it for nothing.
No, I understand.
No, and, and if we have to charge for doing that, it may be cheaper to rent the beer garden. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that'd have to be a business decision that you would have to make at that point, but, you know, I, I think when we get into the, when we get into the private business for-profit venture as opposed to a special use permit for the good of the community, I think that's two different areas that we, we really need to, to look at as a council, and costs involved, true costs involved.
Okay, Raymond, you have it.
Well, we have others, street dances, and they, they never do for profit, we just help a lot of, do some money to help out to get the equipment down there. We, we do the one on the 100 block every year, and I mean, we do many things, I mean, to help out, and I think if it brings people to town and does something, I think it's great, you know, I guess, but, you know, we do something for nonprofit, too, they just, they just, they don't make any, they make some money, but they never give it to anybody but themselves, you know?
Well, you just afford that organization at that time.
Well, I understand, I understand.
The only other street dance would be the Crazy Days, which is deemed a city, city event.
Celebration.
That'd be a, that'd be a separate, separate type of, of a deal, I would, that's what I am guessing, anyway.
Okay.
I have a, I have a question for the city staff. You see, we have an agreement now, as of yesterday, we didn't have an agreement, and there were a lot of questions and issues. Is staff satisfied with this agreement?
Yep, he's signed it, he's made his payment, there's another one due June 1st, so I think we're all squared away.
And I apologize for that, I didn't know that, and so, the next call, I'll put it here again.
I was missing, I called Al today and asked him some of those questions, you know, it's because I was wondering about a couple things, that's why I called you.
Okay. Any other questions by the council?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve this, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved, thank you. Next item on the agenda is, let's see, we go to continuation of Board of Appeals and Equalization meeting, and with that, we'll go to Bill.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Board of Appeal and Equalization. I'm Bill Efforts, I'm the city assessor for, for Oatana. Tonight, I have with me Tyler Dearson, Prazer in our office. Since our last meeting, our original meeting, April 22nd, there were several people that showed up that night. As instructed, we did review all those properties, and since that time, we did receive other phone calls. We have an, hopefully, an all-inclusive list of everyone that we've talked to from the first night until this evening.
Okay.
And what those results, and this is what our recommendations would be. There's three pages, the last page, the third page, I guess, those are a list of concurrences where the property owners did concur with the results of our appraisal, and we would ask for the board to approve those. The first two pages are still open appeals, and so those, I guess those would still be up for board discretion.
Okay.
I just do want to comment that after tonight, the next method of appeal would be coming to the county board, Steel County Board of Equalization, June 13th, in the boardroom at the Administrative Center at 5:30. And we would just ask that any resident that does wish to, resident or property owner, wish to come to that meeting, just give us a call so that we can adequately prepare.
So, page three, the concurrences are the ones that have been agreed upon?
Correct.
Okay, and that's what we would approve tonight?
Well, hopefully, we offer all of these recommendations up, all three pages. If there's anybody here in the audience that wishes to lend any additional information, I see Mr. Melder is here, that's, that's your discretion.
Okay, thank you. If anybody does want to comment on this, please step to the mic and-
I haven't received anything.
Please come up to the mic.
And sign in, identify, please, thank you.
You most certainly are on the list.
Can I get a copy of the document?
Yes. We will send you a letter, based on what the results of the Board of Appeals are, we'll send you a letter, what those results are.
They're gonna vote to accept or reject package in total, or impartial?
That would be up to the board's discretion. I would recommend that we, after hearing from you, they certainly have the discretion to change it, but I just wanted to let you know that the next step in the appeals process is coming to the county board.
I guess what Gary is telling me is that he hasn't seen anything to know if it's been, he would agree with it or not yet.
I think we've, we spoke with Mr. Melder quite a bit and done some exhaustive appraisal, I think you know where, where we stand on the property, I hope.
Prior to April the 22nd, correct?
Yes, and it, it hasn't changed since April 2nd, 22nd. I apologize if that wasn't clear, that we were, we were firm on, on our recommendation on April 22nd.
So your review is to leave it the same?
That would be correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry for any miscommunication.
So then we're still on for June?
Yep. That is up, that's up to you, yes.
That's, so I know.
Okay, okay. Any questions from the council?
So the, the ones that are still under review, those will likely, could change, but approval of the, of this in total will not affect the ones that are currently under review, correct?
If I understand it right, yeah, that they're still under review, we would ask you to, you know, provide no change, but then by including them on this list, they will keep their options, their avenues of appeal open for the county board, and then we will continue to deal with them. There's one resident that had several properties that he called, and we just couldn't get to all of them at this point.
Okay, so basically, what we would be doing is approving this, allowing it to move forward to the county. Is that correct?
Correct, Mr. Chair, that's what I would recommend.
Okay, any other questions by the council? Terrell, entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
We have a motion to approve these as presented. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That approves these. Now we have minutes of the Board of Appeals meeting that will open up for comment, and would you be commenting on that, or Chris, as far as the, so we just approve these minutes as presented?
Yep.
So.
Unless you see any changes, or, you know.
If there's questions on these, we will look at that, if not, we'll approve as the minutes are presented, so.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These have been approved also. And then we got the comments, 3.12, okay, that's it. Now we'll move on to, thank you very much for-
Thank you, Mr. Chair and council members.
And that, that will now move on to the county level, so, right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is conditional use.
Will you notify all those property owners then about the county deal, or how do they get through?
We'll send a letter now.
Okay.
Okay, that actually was a continuation of our meeting, April. What we need to do now is adjourn that meeting, so we'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
The motion by Greg to adjourn, a second by Nate.
Sure.
Okay.
A second.
I thought I heard you.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion there? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now that is, meeting has been adjourned, and we will now move on to conditional use permit number C-1351, Tailwind's Oatana Limited Liability Construction of a 4,500-square-foot building, and that will go to Troy.
The Tailwind Group, which is the developer of the Old Hardee's budget mark site, is proposing to construct a 4,500-square-foot retail structure. The structure would be, have three tenants, the southernmost tenant is proposed to have a restaurant with the drive, with drive-through facilities. Parking is met on the site for all the tenants. If you look at the drive-up lane, there is stack room for two to three cars. We did suggest that the menu board be moved further to the south to allow for more stacking room. There will also be a six-foot-high screen fence along the west property line there where we have residential neighbors. We did have a public- We did have a public hearing at the Planning Commission, and there was a few, some questions on the traffic generation on site and the lighting. So, Planning Commission recommended approval with seven conditions there, and staff would recommend approval of this conditional use permit as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council?
I move we approve.
Troy had mentioned that there was suggestion by the planning department to move that menu board further south on the property to allow additional stacking distance there. Because if you look at the site plan, I mean, it appears that two or three cars are able to stack there. Anything more than that would probably be all stacked and held into 13th Street. I think we need to add that condition, that menu board be moved further to the south, feasible to allow more stacking available for vehicles. So, I guess I would like to make a recommendation that we add a condition to that effect, that menu board, if it's feasible to sell further.
Troy, did they accept that, or...
They are workable to that. There's been some talk that the design of the menu board is not done, and so there's been some discussion of maybe putting it on the building, the south side of the building, but all those details have not been figured out yet. So, with what Brent had said there, we could add a condition on there to move the menu board further south, as far south as feasible on this project, to allow more stack room.
So, that would be the condition that we would add to this?
Yeah, we could add that on there, yep.
Oh, accept that.
Okay, so you're going to make a motion to that effect?
Sure.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve this with the menu board being added further south. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent. Any further discussion?
Are we just going to leave this to their discretion? They just, we want, we'd like it moved as south as, as far south as reasonable? Or is Planning Commission going to have to look at that again when they get final plans done, or what's the...
Well, staff has got some concern about stack room, and we do review the building plans when they come in. So, you can leave it up to staff for review. If you wanted to go back to Planning Commission, that could be an option as well.
I'd be comfortable with staff approval.
The recommendation has been to as far south as possible.
With approval. Right, with approval from planning staff.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved with that stipulation. Next one is conditional use 1352, Ohtana Public Utilities, repurposing existing power plant, building one foot above the regulatory floodplain elevation. That will go to Troy.
With the plans of the repurposing of the Ohtana Public Utilities facility, there are two portions of the plans that require a conditional use permit under a floodplain ordinance, the first being a conditional use permit for the wet floodproofing of the facility. And what that is, is the first level of occupied space will be above the regulatory flood elevation. The lowest level, the basement level, will be allowed to flood during a flood event. And they do that by having vents close to the ground that allow water in, and there's actually a buoy system on the backside that, once the water level gets to that, it opens up the vents, allows the lower level to flood, equalizing the pressure on the walls, and then it all can recede out. And there are overhead doors on the bottom there to help with the cleanout when that does happen. The second portion is a conditional use permit for adding more than 1,000 cubic yards of fill to the site. If you look at the plans, they are doing a elevated parking garage, and to get the ramp up there, they are adding fill to bring that ramp level up to, up to the garages. And they're adding about 2,900 square feet of cubic yards of fill for that. So, those are the two portions of the conditional use permit. We have been working with the Department of Natural Resources and the State Floodplain Coordinator to get the design of this building to meet FEMA flood requirements, and all the parking requirements are met by this. And an interesting fact, after the repurposing, there will actually be 34.5% of the site will be green space, where right now, it's 23.1. So, they're actually adding more green space to, to the site with this repurposing. We did have a public hearing at Planning Commission. We did have some of the neighbors across the street with some questions and some concerns about what's going to be across the street. They like the open space now over there. That is reserved for future development of the public utility site, so eventually, nothing's planned right now, but eventually, there could be some buildings there, and they will, when those become reality or planned, we'll probably have additional hearings for the neighbors to know what's going on there. So, staff would recommend approval of this conditional use permit as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council? Terrell entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Troy, is that based on a 100-year flood, or how, where did they come up with that, or...
Yeah, the elevation is based on a 1% chance of the flood level being at that, so it's commonly referred to as a 100-year flood event.
Because the last time, it got way out to the street and just in the Harleys there, I mean, that's, that's extreme.
If you look at the FEMA floodplain maps, the flood of 2010, where the waters went, went to, came to almost exactly where the 100-year floodline was. So, in theory, in that location, we had a 100-year event at that location.
Thank you.
Make a motion, we approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Now, we will move on to resolutions, and we will go to Resolution 49-13, declare costs for proposed assessments, 2012 sidewalk improvement project, and with that, we'll go to Kyle.
Good evening. This is the 2012 miscellaneous sidewalk repair project. This, we pay half of the costs of the repairs, and the property owner pays half of the cost. In addition to that, there was one project, or one property that was held over from 2011, and that is also included in this. The total costs were approximately $53,915.12, and the proposed amount to be assessed is It's not exactly half. We do some of our own work that doesn't get assessed out of this as well, so staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Questions from the council? Raymond.
Has all these property owners been notified, Kyle, or...
Yes, I believe so. It was all done before I started, but...
I'll move we approve.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Fenby. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Next one is Resolution 5113, accept bid and award contract for 12th Avenue Northwest project. We'll go back to Kyle.
No, we still have another resolution in there.
Another resolution.
Oh, I missed one, okay.
5013.
5013, set date for public hearing on 2012 sidewalk improvements.
This is to set the date for the public hearing, proposed to be June 4th for the assessments on the previously mentioned sidewalk. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that one. What is council's wishes on this?
Make a motion, we approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion?
Kyle, was this 211, was there some property owners to resolve this? This goes back to 2011, correct?
There's one property owner.
Have that been corrected, or...
We've had discussions with them. It hasn't been resolved yet.
Okay.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we'll go to 5113 to accept the bid and award contract for 12th Avenue. So, go back to you, Kyle.
Great. These, we received bids last Wednesday for a number of projects, the first of which was 12th Avenue Northwest reconstruction. The bids, we received four bids, and the low bidder was James Brothers Construction of Elysian. The amount of their bid was $616,219.49. Our engineers estimate that the cost was $690,000, or the bid was 11% under our estimate. We feel comfortable with the bidder and recommend approval.
Thank you. Have, has this been designed yet and looked at by the residents in that neighborhood?
Yes, and we are, we're going to be meeting again with one property owner that had requested a change, so...
But this, this bid has been based on the design that was presented?
Correct, and, and the changes that are proposed won't cost anything? So, a change to the curb isn't going to modify our costs, so...
It won't increase them or anything?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Raymond.
Is this company, newer company? I've never heard of it. Is he...
I have not worked with them before, but I did talk with some others, and they have, and they've had good experiences, and I believe they're also in town, have an office with DMN Construction.
Newer Meyer.
Down off Hoffman Drive.
Okay.
Now, they purchased DMN.
Okay, approved or approved?
We have a motion by Greg to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now, we'll go on to 5213, accept bid and award contract for 2013 school-street reconstruction, and again, Kyle.
This is the school-street reconstruction brought on by the failing storm sewer pipe between Oak Avenue and Cedar Avenue. We received four bids. Hazleton Construction of Faribault was the lowest responsible bidder. Their bid was $511,725.1. The engineer's estimate was $592,000. They were 13% under our estimate, and we're, we are comfortable with the low bidder and recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
We approve.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Now, 5313 Resolution, accept bid and award contracts for 2013 Northwest Industrial Park Pond Project, and Troy, I mean, Kyle.
Yeah.
Hit again.
Hopefully, this is the last one. Again, last Wednesday, we received bids for the Northwest Industrial Park Pond Project. This is in conjunction with the Viricon expansion. We received three bids. The lowest responsible bidder was Borneke Construction of Janesville, Minnesota. I have spoken with them. They're comfortable with their bid of $1,472.82. The engineer's estimate was $1,137,000, or 12% under the engineer's estimate. One thing I want to note, alternate number one, was to place some fill on site on the north side of town. We are trying to come up with a closer location for the haul and, and hopefully save some costs. The alternate came in as an add, so it actually added costs to the bid, so we're recommending rejection of alternate number one and just staying with the base bid. I've talked with the contractor, and I'm comfortable with them and recommend approval of the bids.
So, we would be approving just the base bid of 1 million?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Make motion, approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll go with Greg. Second on this one. Raymond.
Are you going to sometime look at the alternate again, or put your plans, just kind of let it sit for a while, or...
Yeah, we've indicated to the property owner that we are interested in the site, and we'd like to work with them going forward, but it, it didn't work out at this time, so hopefully, we can come up with another solution at some point in the future.
Was he in agreement to drop the alternate? When you look at the numbers, when you add that much to the base bid, you know, makes a, was he comfortable with, because that alternate really made it bigger, you know?
Right, and they were disappointed that, as were we, that it didn't work out to, to be lower, but understood that at that cost, we couldn't go forward.
Because they were twice as high as the other bidder for the alternate. They were twice as high than the second bidder on the alternate.
Right, and, and we expected the, it to be a negative, like the number three bidder had. We don't know what their haul site is going to be in advance, so they must have found something that was more convenient.
Okay.
What's the, what's the start and completion date on this project, Kyle?
The exact date I don't have, but it's around the 20th of September, or late September. Start date, we haven't discussed with them yet. Once we get the contracts to them, we will set up a pre-construction meeting and get their schedule. But I expect there'll be a good 30 days of hauling involved, so there's a lot of material coming out of that site.
Any other questions from council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now, we go to Resolution 5413, authorization for agreement with National Development Council, and we'll go to Troy with that.
The city has entered into development agreement with Viricon for the construction of the 100,000-square-foot addition onto their existing facility. The city agreed to assist the company in pursuing new market credits for the project. Obtaining new market tax credits is a competitive process and involves a very lengthy and complicated application process. A private company cannot apply for the new market credits, but a city can. To issue appropriate resources, or to ensure appropriate resources and expertise in the application process, the city would need the assistance of a consultant. National Development Council gets allocated federal funds for the new market tax credits and has processed many substantial applications. There is a fee to NDC for services, and that's $60,000. This would be paid for by Viricon in one lump sum. This is no cost to the city, and we would ensure that the fee is paid before we actually sign the agreement. The city is merely a financing conduit for this project, and that was all discussed during our discussions with the development agreement, that we would help them pursue that, those tax credits. So, staff would recommend approval of Resolution 5413, authorizing signing of the agreement with the National Development Council.
Thank you, Troy. Raymond.
What's the purpose for this, Troy? What would be the, I mean, what would, what's the purpose?
It's financial. Taxes, they're tax credits, so they're pursuing tax credits to help with the financing of the project.
Any other questions from the council?
Approved or approved.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second? Do we have a second to that motion?
I will second that.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Now, we move on to ordinances, 3.51, second reading of proposed ordinance 413, street closure of 4th Street Northwest, and then we'll go back to Troy.
So, this is the second reading of the vacation of 4th Avenue for the Viricon project as well. We had the first reading a few months back. We held off on the second reading until the, the project has started. Got into snowplowing questions and that sort of thing, and see, we had to snowplow it all the way into May, so, so we're doing the second reading now because we've begun construction out there. So, staff would recommend approval, second reading of the street vacation of 4th Avenue.
Thank you, Troy. And this being the second reading, what is the council's wishes?
Approved or approved.
We have a motion to approve by Greg Schultz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Fenby. Any further discussion? Does this be an ordinance? I ask for roll call.
Councilmember Fenby.
Aye.
Trulson.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Burbank?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Abraham?
Aye. Again, this first reading, this is all eyes. This will come up at our next council meeting in two weeks for the second reading. And now we will move on to 3.53, First Reading of Z321, Public Utilities Rezoning, Property from R6 High Density. And Troy?
Again, with the Oatana Public Utilities repurposing, we looked at the whole site, and there's still a portion of Mill Street that's dedicated right of way. It's west of Walnut Avenue, goes right in front of their garages there. And if you remember, that used to be the entrance, one of the entrances into the park that has been closed off for a while now. So, in order to, it's a housekeeping item here, really, to, to vacate that as, as public right of way. We did hold a public hearing. No one had any issues with the vacation of the right of way there, since there's really no access for the public there. So, staff would recommend approval of the vacating of the right of way as recommended by the planning commission.
Thank you, Troy.
So moved.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion?
Utilities taking ownership, whether they repair that and everything?
Yep, so that becomes part of their, their site, and so I think there's the curb line, you know, and everything, and that wouldn't even need to be there anymore. If they wanted to redesign that, they could do that.
When was that closed off? Ten, ten, how long was that closed off?
Probably 15 years ago.
15 years ago?
Yes.
Troy, I've got a question regards to that alleyway that goes along north and south. Is, is that an actual alley, or is that a service road for the utilities?
That was a service road. There was never a dedicated alley right of way. That was always a service road. The residents there, you know, used it, and I think that with permission, used it as an alleyway. That was, you know, one of the reasons to keep that Mill Street right of way in places, so they would have, you know, public access to that service road, which OPU allowed them to use. With all the houses gone now, there's really no need for any of that anymore.
Okay. Any further discussion? Again, being an ordinance, ask for roll call. Janet?
Councilmember Svenby?
Aye.
Trulson?
Aye.
Dotson?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Burbank?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Abraham?
Aye. Again, this first reading, this is all eyes. This will come up at our next council meeting in two weeks for the second reading. And now we will move on to 3.53, First Reading of Z321, Public Utilities Rezoning, Property from R6 High Density. And Troy?
Again, with the repurposing of public utilities, the zoning, there's two zoning classifications on the whole site. B3 Central Business District on the current facility, where all the houses were along Walnut Avenue, that was in an R6 High Density Residential Zone. So, again, to get everything into one zoning district, they're requesting the rezoning of the R6 property to a B3 Central Business District. We did have a public hearing of planning commission on that. We did have neighbors ask about, you know, what that means. Again, they don't have any immediate plans to do anything with the, the green space down there right now. And so, they like the green space, and so whenever anything would be built there, again, that would likely trigger a conditional use permit for them. They've, the neighbors have, have said that public utilities have been a good neighbor down there, so they're not too concerned of anything too bad being there.
Okay.
So, staff would recommend approval of the zone change request from R6 to B3.
Thank you. Raymond?
Is that gonna be leveled off and then grass seeded and mowed?
Well, what, what you see right now is the, the lower, lower line area is seeded, so hopefully, we'll see all that as grass. There is a gravelled area there, crush rock area there, where it's kind of overflow parking. They will be using that area for staging during the, the repurposing and construction. So, there will be some equipment on there. That was indicated to the neighbors during that public hearing as well, and so they're aware of that.
But, but that, the rest of that, where those homes were?
Yeah.
That was designed to be recessed in case of extra water capacity. So, that's why it was done that way, but it is seeded, so. Any questions from the council?
I guess I, I, I feel like, like Ray does in regards to that, right? It's not aesthetically pleasing down there as it sits right now. And, and I understand holding water and that, but I would, I would hope that they would make that more aesthetically pleasing to the people that have to look at that every day.
I think once you see the grass growing there, it's gonna...
They did do planting of the seeds late in the season last year, and hopefully, all that'll come up. But that will be, you know, their intention is for that to be green space, so anything that doesn't come up well will likely be reseeded there.
Okay.
Nice place to have a neighborhood picnic.
Okay. Chair is looking for a motion.
I approve.
We already had a motion.
Motion, motion by Raymond, second by?
I'll second.
Okay. Second by Nate. I mean, Kevin. With that, any other questions? And again, being an ordinance, ask for roll call.
Councilmember Svenby?
Aye.
Trulson?
Aye.
Dotson?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Burbank?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Abraham?
Aye. Now we have 3.54, Reading, First Amendment to Code Section 500-20, Fees and Charges and Rates Established. And we'll go...
I've got that.
I'm sorry.
I can take that.
Yes, that's what I was going to.
You'll recall that last October, the council adopted an ordinance procedure for the collection of delinquent utility accounts through the special assessment process pursuant to the charter provision and the statutes in that regard. The proposed amendment is to make it clear that that procedure applies to current delinquent accounts, to apply to accounts that were delinquent presently. It's well to note that this does not create either a new penalty or a new lien, because our charter already provides for a lien on properties serviced upon which there exist unpaid accounts. So, this is what is known as a procedural ordinance, as opposed to one that would be substantive and changing or divesting rights.
With that, you recommend a change?
Recommend the change. And Joe Green is here from the utilities, and this, this is a proposal along with the management of the OPU.
Okay.
There's Joe.
You have any more to add to that, Joe?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion we approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do you have a second? Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion?
I've got a question. How, how far delinquent are some of these?
Over 90 days, well past 90 days, in fact. Some are several years.
Janet, I, I guess, at what point are they no longer serviced by the City of Oatana?
Some are still served.
Correct.
Yeah.
My question is, how long does that go on? When?
What would, what would trigger a service shut off? If they get that far out?
If, if they will not enter into a payment agreement with utilities, if they are disconnected, if they've left town. And actually, these wouldn't be rental properties, would be, these would be property owners. You know, there's still those customers that are delinquent on their accounts that are renting or don't own the property, but these are just property owners.
Have, have any of them entered into an agreement in the payment process, or?
The list, the list is down to 24 now.
Okay.
It was as high as, I think, 65. So, we've worked, you know, diligently with as many as we can contact to try and avoid putting a tax lien on their property.
And you will be continuing to work with the rest of them?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah.
So, the list we had a couple of weeks ago, that's the one we're still working off?
That's correct.
But that's been downgraded, then, that list?
In the last two, I think we've maybe one or two.
Oh, really?
Possibly. I think we're at 24.
We had a list a couple, three weeks ago, I guess.
Because we bill once a month, that, you know, we can't, we have to wait until the next billing cycle.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council?
What was the delay? Was there some legal, why we waited?
Right.
Okay.
See, we have a motion? No.
Motion, a second.
What's that? Yes, we...
Get a motion, a second.
And again, this being an ordinance, ask for roll call.
Councilmember Svenby?
Aye.
Trulson?
Aye.
Dotson?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Burbank?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Abraham?
Aye. And that has been approved for the first reading, and we will have the second reading at our next council meeting in two weeks. And with that, we'll move on to contracts and agreements, which would be 3.61, Development Agreement with Tailwind Group Incorporated, and we'll go to Troy.
Tax increment in financing has been approved for the redevelopment of the Old Hardee's Budget Mart Site. This allows the city to enter into a development agreement with the property owner, Tailwind Group. Under the agreement, Tailwind Group would construct a 7,000 square foot office building and 3,500 square foot commercial building, and the city would agree to realign Barney Street at the intersection of Oak Avenue. The total increment amount is 20, or 202,000 in today's dollars. Public improvements are estimated at 100,000. Demolition of existing buildings and site work is eligible for up to $100,000 of tax increment generated from the project. There's also TIF money set aside to cover administrative costs. The TIF district would run up to 25 years, although we are anticipating that the obligation would be completed in 15 years. All current taxes that are being paid now by the property owner would continue to be paid throughout the TIF district, so we're keeping that level. The city would bond for the public improvements, which would be paid back from the tax increment of the project. Under the agreement, the city would be reimbursed first for the street improvements, and the developer next as a pay-as-you-go TIF. So, as tax money's paid in, above what is owed to the city for the street improvements, that would go back to the developer, up to that $100,000 maximum. So, staff would recommend authorizing signing of the development agreement with Tailwind Group Incorporated.
Thank you, Troy. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. With that, we'll move on to public comment, and if anyone would like to speak, please come up to the microphone, and we give you about two minutes to speak on items that are not on the agenda or have not been on the agenda today. Please sign in, please.
My husband owns that lot across from the Law Enforcement Center, 215 East Pearl Street, and I heard there was comments on the last one, so I came here to tell you what we're up to. There's a pile there, but that is limestone rock. That came from the base, basement. The city said that, yeah, we could take it out, crush it up, and then put it back in the hole. Well, instead, we screened it, because then someone wanted to buy it and use it as pavers per decorative, but they haven't gotten it yet. And then there's a small little pile of concrete, but that's gonna be taken out at the end of the month, and then we're gonna reseed it. So, that's basically what is there. And then I also want to comment that I run the compost site. We have the contract there. And in the paper, it said, I had a lot of people argue with me, saying that it was $6 a load instead of $6 a yard, that we reduced it, you know, from eight to six. So, I don't know if you'll be, be getting complaints about it or not, but I've had some that have been really angry at me, saying, well, no, it's $6 a yard, and, well, you have two yards there, or you have a yard and a half, and then I charge them nine or 12. And so, that's all I want to say, if, if that could get corrected in the paper or not.
I guess what I would say there, Janet, is you need to talk to the paper about that, because that is beyond our control as far as what goes into the paper.
Okay.
But at this point, I've not heard any complaints
Okay.
About what's happening out there.
Okay, yeah, because I know we've gotten a lot, and then the other place has charged a lot cheaper, so, and then they said, well, I only get to charge you this much. I said, well, I'm open later, till 6 o'clock, they close at 4:30. And I said, well, I have longer hours, but some people are understanding and others aren't, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. And, and as a note, that, the only things that we can take are what's boulevard items.
Now, I was just gonna say, what I had planned to do at, when it comes to my turn, is I'm gonna read the policy that's on our website that we've sent to the paper and to the radio, just to reinforce that, because I know we've gotten calls too, and there's some confusion, so...
I've had a lot of calls too, and then they said, well, gosh, we should have picked that up, and now we're getting charged for it.
Yeah. So, we're trying to make it clear. So, yeah, I'm gonna read that right at the end here, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just, could I add on that a minute?
Yes, Raymond.
I was driving around Mills on Wells today, and I think people are kind of drug everything to the curb, like they're just waiting for us to come. I think there's some misunderstanding. If it was in your backyard, it's not boulevard trees, and
Right.
As I drive around, I better saw 50 piles where people just sitting right on the curb, like, we're gonna come and fix it, but I don't think there's a...
Yep. Residents are required to take care of their own property. The city is only picking up on the public rights of way of boulevard trees. Those are the ones we're picking up. Everything else, you're responsible for, and our compost site has agreed to, you know, lesser fee, which is very generous, very nice, and they are open additional hours as well. That, that reduced fee only goes until May 18th, so we would just ask everyone to please take care of your, your debris. It's, we're also handing out some, as you said, there are some folks putting it on the boulevards already, and even furniture and, and different items, and certainly, that is not, you know, the city's not gonna pick that up.
It is.
And so, we are handing out copies of the policy to those property owners who may have misunderstood what's going on, so.
Did get one call. It was a bank-owned house, and the tree ended up halfing the street, and so yesterday was just cones around it, but I, I don't know if we're gonna have to try to take care of that one, but I'll have to drive up there and look at it tomorrow.
We'll take a look at that.
But there's, there's nobody in the home, it's repossessed.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? With that, we'll move on to council comment, and we'll start with Brent.
Just want to say thanks to all the city employees for the hard work they did last Thursday with that snowstorm, and also their work with the, all the trees in south over in the boulevards and the streets, so thank you to the city employees for their hard work.
Thank you, Brent. Raymond?
Could you send us an update schedule where we're at in the next couple of months, what we're gonna be?
Sure.
If you would do that, appreciate it.
Nate?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. Greg?
Nothing this evening.
Dave?
Nothing from Word 3?
I'll skip Kevin. Kevin?
I want to congratulate Beth Svenby and her group. As cold as it was and snow on the ground, Le Colmire was packed with people Saturday. It's a very worthy cause, and to see that many people out there despite the elements, that was great. There were no problems with parking down there, very well taken care of. The other thing I would say is, in regards to the tree removal, be patient. Our crews, we only have so many people, and they're working extremely hard to clean up as much as they can daily.
Thank you, Kevin.